I'd like to call to order the regular council meeting for the city of Springdale for February 5th, 2025. If we could all stand for the pledge of allegiance?
Pledge allegiance is the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Brown, if you take role?
Mr. Gleaves?
President.
Mr. Jacobs?
Present.
Ms. McFarland?
Present.
Mrs. Sullivan Weiskopf?
Present.
Mr. Vanover?
Present.
Mrs. Webster?
Present.
Mr. Anderson?
Present.
Counsel, before we move on to the rest of the agenda in minutes, I wanted to take a moment, if I could, it's not on the agenda, but I wanted to recognize a recent passing in our community that was a serious loss, and I think we need to take a moment to recognize that. This past week, the city of Springdale lost Dan Schroyer. He was a former council member, a strong member of the community, a great father, husband, grandfather, and just a really good guy, and, excuse me. So if I, I'd ask that we please take just a minute in silent reflection to consider Dan and his family and all the work that he's done for our community. Thank you. Ms. Sullivan Weiskopf?
Thank you, Mr. President. Just piggybacking on that, I would like to take a moment just to say that we're all very sad to hear about Dan Schroyer, and he was a great guy, and I do want to mention some of his, one of his things that he did that he told me about when he was on council, he was so proud about, was his wounded warriors boating trips, where he would take them out fishing, and he would take groups of wounded warriors, veterans, and they would go out and they would fish, and it made a world of difference in so many people's lives. And both he and his wife Rhonda used to talk about it all the time with such pride. With him being chief of police when I was younger, and then being on council, and being able to serve with him, I'm very, very honored to be able to have that time, and thank you for giving the moment of silence. Oh, yeah, he was fired, sorry, fired, chief, I'm a little emotional, sorry.
And I thank you, and I, I'm a little embarrassed that I neglected to include that and his list of accolades. He truly was a very strong member of our community, and it's, it's hard not, it's hard to get all of the things he did for Springdale in one sentence, so thank you for those comments. Mayor Hawkins?
Thank you, Mr. President, and just to briefly echo those sentiments, the thing that stood out for me in his time on council was he was very focused on making sure things were done in a fair manner, and that's, that's something that always appreciated and respected. And he was also forward-thinking, there's some issues that have been coming up that I've gotten questions called, and some of you guys have gotten questions called on here recently, that he was addressing and reaching out to myself and administration two months ago. So it, it just shows he's, he's always been someone who's been a forward-thinking individual with concerns that, for issues that didn't even apply to him.
Thank you for those comments. I'm sure there'll be more we can do to honor his memory in the future, but as this just happened the past week, I wanted to make sure we acknowledge that. I think it's important when members of the community like that pass that we take that time. He really was a great man, he was, I served on council with him, and he taught me quite a bit when I, in the early days I was here, so I certainly appreciate that. All right, while we're talking about the agenda and things that are on it, I did want to make counsel aware that there is an additional item that wasn't listed on the agenda that we'd like to include, and that's after communications. It's part of communications in general, but there is a 5A that we will be covering tonight, and that will include introductions for staff. This was included in your legislative report. Just know that after communications, we'll take a time to do that. I'm told that we don't need to do a formal motion to make that change, we're just going to include it in communications. All right, and with that, we will continue to move on with the business of council. Next up on our agenda is the minutes council you have received in your packets, the minutes for the January 15th, 2025. What is your pleasure?
Moved to adopt.
Second.
Moved in second, questions or discussion or changes? All right, seeing none, all those in favor of approving the minutes as published signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions? The minutes are approved with seven affirmative votes. Next up, communications, Ms. Brown, are there communications to counsel this evening?
Thank you, Mr. President, yes, we do have an economic development transfer form for consideration, and I'll defer to Mr. Yule for more information about that.
Mr. Yule?
Thank you, Mr. President. We do have a economic development transfer form from the Ohio Department of Commerce, Division of Liquor Control, and this request is coming from BNF, BF Plus LLC. They're requesting to, filing for a permit, for a liquor permit for an event center over at the Shakely Building. And administration has no objection to this, this, they do not currently hold a liquor permit, so they're requesting to get one from another vendor. They have operated as a business and an event center in another establishment, they've only had a few trainings and whatnot, so there's not really any, any issues or problems with them operating as an event center.
Counsel, any concerns that we need to address with that? Mr. Vanover?
Thank you, Mr. President, Mr. Yule, is that a, what we call a track, Trex?
Trex, correct.
Okay, that's fine, I have no problem.
Any other questions or concerns about the liquor license? All right, seeing none, go ahead and file.
Okay, thank you.
All right, next, as I mentioned earlier, this is 5A, we'll do staff introductions, Mr. Yule or Mayor Hawkins, I'm not sure which is going to take that.
Mr. Yule is going to address the matter, I would just say briefly, we've got the best directors in the world here, and these two they're going to introduce tonight are true assets, and we're very pleased to have them. Mr. Yule is going to take care of it.
Pleasure, Mr. Yule.
Thank you, Mayor and Council President. First, I'd like to call up Melissa Hayes. Melissa Hayes started with us back in Sept-, September as our chief building official in our building department. She holds a bachelor's degree in urban studies from the College of Charleston and a master's degree in public administration from Villanova University. She's a certified planner, recognized by the American Planning Association. She has over 20 years of experience in urban planning in both municipal and private sector roles with the city of Las Vegas, Clark County Schools, Anderson Township, Hamilton County, TEC Engineering, and most recently with the city of Montgomery. She's married with two daughters, and in their spare time, they operate a small farm on 24 acres, raising beef cattle and chickens. And she is also the daughter of Mr. Dave Butch, our former public works director. So, that, Melissa?
Thank you so much, I don't really have many words, but I appreciate you, meeting you all this evening, and look forward to working with you guys.
Thank you, welcome aboard.
Thank you. And next up, I'd like to ask Renetta Edwards to come on up. Renetta started with us in November, is our human resources administrator. Renetta has a bachelor's degree in human ecology from the Ohio State University. And she also has a master's degree in human resources from American Intercontinental University. She brings over 17 years of combined experience in both human resources and payroll. She has experience with the city of Forest Park and most recently Colrain Township. So, Renetta is married with a daughter and two sons, and in their spare time, they volunteer at the women's shelter and the men's shelter with their church, and travel when their schedules allow. That's Renetta Edwards.
It's very nice to meet everyone. I wanted to say that my time here at Springdale has been definitely fast, quick and fast-paced, but I enjoy everything that I do.
Great, welcome aboard, you're part of a great team, so we're glad to have you both, thank you. All right, moving along, next up on the agenda, we have communications in the audience. This is an opportunity for anyone in the audience that would like to address counsel for any reason, simply come up to the podium, state your name and address, and you'd have up to five minutes to address counsel on any matter. At this point, the floor is open for communications in the audience. Second call? Third and final call? All right, at this point, I'm closing communications in the audience, and we'll go ahead and move on to ordinances and resolutions. First up is ordinance number 62025, this is a first reading, Mr. Jacobs, when you're ready.
Ordinance number 62025, an ordinance authorizing the mayor and city administrator to enter into a memorandum of understanding with the Hamilton County Regional Planning Commission for use of funding through the Mini Planning Grant Program to complete the Mill Creek Connector feasibility study. Whereas the city of Springdale, the city is exploring the feasibility and cost of extending pedestrian and bike facilities from Northland Boulevard at Springfield Pike to connect with surrounding trails, specifically the Glenwood Gardens to Wynton Woods Connector Trail, the study. And whereas in furtherance of the study, the city applied for and received grant funding from the Hamilton County Regional Planning Commission Mini Planning Grant Program in the amount of $15,000 towards the cost of the study. Now therefore be it ordained by the council of the city of Springdale, Ohio, members elected thereto concurring. Section 1, that the mayor and city administrator are hereby authorized to execute a memorandum of understanding with the Hamilton County Regional Planning Commission to accept funding through the Mini Planning Grant Program for completion of the Mill Creek Connector feasibility study, the memorandum. A copy of the memorandum is attached as Exhibit A incorporated herein by reference. Section 2, council hereby finds and determines that all formal actions relative to the passage of this ordinance were taken in an open meeting of this council, and that all deliberations of this council and of its committees, if any, which resulted in formal action, were taken in meetings open to the public in full compliance with applicable legal requirements, including section 121.22 of the Ohio Revise Code. Section 3, that this ordinance shall take effect on the earliest date allowed by law.
Counsel, this was the first reading for ordinance number 62025, are there any questions or discussion this evening? All right, seeing none, we'll go ahead and move on, we will see this again at our next meeting. Next up, we have ordinance number 72025, this is another first reading, Mr. Jacobs, when you're ready.
Ordinance number 72025, an ordinance authorizing the mayor and city administrator to enter into an agreement with Jake Sweeney Chrysler Jeep Dodge Ram for the purchase of two 2024 Dodge Durango Police Pursuit vehicles. Whereas the state of Ohio has advertised and received bids for the purchase of vehicles, and whereas Jake Sweeney Chrysler Jeep Dodge Ram is equal to or less than the best bidder price of $87,400 for the purchase of two 2024 Dodge Durango Police Pursuit vehicles. Now therefore be it ordained by the council of the city of Springdale, Ohio, members elected thereto concurring. Section 1, that the city of Springdale accepts the state's vehicle specifications and agrees that Jake Sweeney Chrysler Jeep Dodge Ram is equal to or less than the best bidder for the purchase. Section 2, that the mayor and city administrator are hereby authorized to enter into an agreement with Jake Sweeney Chrysler Jeep Dodge Ram in the amount of $87,400 for the purchase of two 2024 Dodge Durango Police Pursuit vehicles for use by the city of Springdale Police Department. Section 3, that the finance officer tax commissioner is hereby authorized to pay Jake Sweeney Chrysler Jeep Dodge Ram a sum not to exceed $87,400 for the purchase of two 2024 Dodge Durango Police Pursuit vehicles. Section 4, council hereby finds and determines that all formal actions relative to the passage of this legislation were taken in an open meeting of this council, and that all deliberations of this council and of its committees, if any, which resulted in formal action, were taken in meetings open to the public in full compliance with applicable legal requirements, including section 121.22 of the Ohio Revise Code. Section 5, that this ordinance shall take effect on the earliest date allowed by law.
Counsel, you've heard the first reading of ordinance number 72025, is there any questions or discussion this evening? All right, seeing none, like the last one, we will see this again at our next meeting. All right, that's all the ordinances and resolutions I have on our agenda for tonight. Next, we'll move on to old business. Under old business, we had an item that was carried over from our last meeting regarding zoning code 153252F6AI, the keeping of domestic pets. In short, this was the item that council as a whole agreed to send to Rules and Law to discuss or look into updating the ordinances that we have or the laws that we have around the hard limit of domestic pets that we have. It's often referred to as the dog limit or the cat limit, which currently is two of any mix of them and the associated laws. In our last meeting, we agreed that we would take it up tonight. I believe the committee had asked for council's opinions on how they would like to proceed, be it in ordinance with the research that they did, or just ideas in general. So that's the preamble I have, I don't know if Mr. Vanover or Mr. Jacobs on the committee had anything else to add before other people chime in, Mr. Jacobs?
Thank you, Mr. President, I made available to council and administration just a copy of the minutes of that initial meeting that Mr. Vanover and I had concerning the dog, the limit on two pets. And we had talked about this last week, or at our last meeting. In general, just to summarize and maybe bring members of the public up to speed, there, there had been research done, there are, there are no communities nearby that have such a hard limit. Most of the communities nearby have no limit whatsoever. And after a bit of discussion between Mr. Vanover, myself, and administration, we had discussed basically two options that, that we're presenting to council just in an informal way to see what the feedback would be. And that would be to move the number from two pets to either four or five, and we didn't really have a strong feeling about each. Between the four or the five, then the other, the other option is to remove the number completely. So those are the two approaches we've had so far. I will, I will say, and I think all of us know in the community, that there are folks who are in violation of this ordinance. When I moved in, I was in violation of this ordinance because I brought four pets into the city. They've since passed, and I'm in compliance. But it is true to say that there are many residents in the community that have more than two pets, and it's not a problem, but it could be a problem if their neighbor decides to call them out on it. And so I feel like, I feel strongly that we should move forward with some increase because then that would protect those residents who do have more than two pets that are causing no problem, and their, their one neighbor complaint away from being out of compliance and being called on it. And the last thing I do want to mention about that, our passive enforcement system does depend on residents reporting issues that they see. And there's, there's a loophole there where residents that have a beef with each other could result in, you know, a negative outcome. And I think if we can increase this limit, we're going to further protect residents from that in general. Thank you.
Thank you for that, and a question as a follow-up on that is, by changing the limit, that does not change any of the other controls around safe and responsible pet ownership. It doesn't change the, the noise requirements, the waste requirements, health requirements, you're not advocating that, it's just the number, is that correct? Mr. Vanover?
That is correct, Mr. President. It, you know, we have in place right now leash laws, vicious dog laws, noise ordinances, all of that, and that will stay the way it is. This in no way affects it, it's just that one caveat on the numbers. And we, and a tertiary search of, excuse me, ORC, the state of Ohio has five. I, well, I'll state strongly, I'm not in favor of completely lifting the limit. I, I subscribe to the philosophy that the late, late great Barbara Woodhouse did, in that there are more bad dog owners than there are bad dogs. So with that, neither one of us had, you know, a hard lock on the four or five, but I think those are reasonable changes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Thank you, Mr. President, I agree with Mr. Vanover in general that having a number is, is my preference, and if I had to state it, it would be five, but we're open to that feedback from other members of council. Thank you.
Mayor Hawkins?
Thank you, Mr. President, I, I just want to make sure that for everybody on the dais in terms of council and, and any resident that's present or watching is clear, this is not something where we are not enforcing it. Different from, I'll say, the, the ordinance we have with regard to sale of firearms from, from years ago, where we were directly not enforcing it, we are enforcing this if it, if it's brought to the building department's attention, and the building department will act, that person will get a notice and so forth. It's a unique situation that is, is not easily enforced. We're not going to go banging on people's doors or getting warrants to kick in people's doors to count dogs and cats, but if we are aware of it, then there will be action that's taken, and that's part of what spurred this, is there's an individual who was in a situation similar because of an issue with a, a neighbor, but we did enforce that with that individual, they had to come in compliance. So want to make sure folks are aware of that. The only other thing I'll say, obviously this is something for council to go through and, and address, it is important, much as we've talked about, whether it's RVs, sports utility vehicles, poultry, chickens, whatever. The main thing I'd ask is make sure that, that folks are considering not just the people that want whatever it is, but the people that are going to live next to the people that want whatever it is. So this, this isn't about the person that wants to have five dogs, it's about the person that's going to live next to the person that's going to have five dogs. So as you go through that discussion, I just ask you to keep that in mind.
Thank you, Mr. Vanover?
Thank you, Ms. President, and that's correct. And also too, just to be clear, this is not the final decision because this will have to be forwarded to Planning Commission, but we felt, the committee felt that we would be doing them a disservice if we didn't at least give them some preliminary guidance on what our thought processes were, but it will have to go to Planning for their approval because that's, it's part of the code. And I, I don't think there's, well, my feeling is there's not going to be a rush of people going out and buying, you know, more dogs or cats. And, well, just a caveat note on that, the cats, by ODNRs, standards are not considered domestic animals, which is part of the problem with feral populations that we have. But, you know, and again, that's, a lot of that issue comes down on an owner issue rather than the animal itself, but just know that whatever we do tonight will be forwarded to Planning Commission with our recommendation or thoughts.
Yeah, and that's a good call out, especially with cats, I believe our ordinance also requires that our, our cats need to be kept indoors only. Our ordinances require cats to be stayed indoors. I don't believe our ordinance permits indoor/outdoor cats either, so that's something that might need to be looked at. Ms. Webster, that, that may not be right, though, I, somebody had told me that.
Are you done talking? Are you done talking?
Go ahead.
Thank you.
Ms. Webster?
Since our last meeting, I have done a little research on this issue. It was first adopted in 1978, and it stands today, 47 years later. Mrs. Wall first came to city council on November 20th, 2024, and requested that we change his ordinance. There was a Rules and Laws meeting on January 20th, excuse me, January 15th, 2025. At the regular council meeting that same night, there was discussion about changing the number of do, pets. I heard four or five dogs would be good. The lady with the chickens had to come to meetings throughout the calendar year of 2024. It was finally settled in 2025. What is a rush? Who would want to live next to a pack of dogs? Barking, fighting, mating, squealing, doing their vent business, not to mention the smell. I know of no one who has moved from Springdale because of this ordinance. I am not up here to win friends and influence people. I am here to do what I feel is best for all of the residents of Springdale. I personally feel that changing this ordinance would have to be hard to enforce and would pit neighbor against neighbor. Thank you for your attention.
Mr. Vanover? Oh, you had your light on? No? Okay. Understandable. Mr. Gleaves?
Thank you, Mr. President. For the record, I own two dogs, and if anybody has dogs for a long time, or cats or any pets for a long period of time, one thing that they want is attention. The more dogs or pets that you have, the more attention that you have to divide to those animals. It's, should not be that hard to make a decision, I, I personally would like to see three. Combination of three. My two dogs, they're company for each other, and it comes to a point where space is an issue. The acreage of our homes, on the average, I think four or five pets is kind of hard to manage personally, but that's just my opinion, and I'm, I'm in favor of moving to three dogs, cats, combination of the above, to keep it practical within the acreage of the average homeowner, and to give your pets the attention that they need. Thank you.
Any other questions or discussion on the side? So I will say, the, the process that we talked about before is still the case. When we agreed on the rules of council back in January, certainly any individual council member is welcome to bring forward an ordinance, however they see fit, and it would be discussed and put on the agenda. This was an item that council as a whole sent to Rules and Law. Rules and Law has sent back the research that they did, and as Mr. Vanover mentioned, there's, there's certainly two paths, as I understand it, to proceed, or I guess there's three options. One is to do nothing, we had the discussion of research, which I think is an important step for any council to do in response to residents. Now, if a resident comes forward with a concern, especially one that generates a lot of interest, I believe it is our responsibility to investigate it, which we did, and I appreciate the work that was done there. At this point, we have three options, we can be satisfied with the research and be done. Council as a group could ask Rules and Law to draft an ordinance based on the feedback that they heard tonight, and present the ordinance here, and then we would vote on sending it to Planning, like we did with the urban farming ordinance. The other alternative that we have, that Mr. Vanover was describing, would be that we ask the administration or Planning to take up the creation itself of the ordinance with the general feedback that we've given. So with that in mind, I, I believe those are the three options, if anyone has other options they're aware of, this would be the time to tell me. All right, so with that in mind, certainly I'm open, the chair is open to a motion. If council wanted as a group to vote to send it to Rules and Law, what that would require is a motion from a member of council to refer it back to Rules and Law to create an ordinance to send to Planning. The other option is a member of council could make a motion to send it to Planning for consideration, just as a formal request. And is that right, Mr. Braun, did I miss, do I have that correct procedure? Thank you. All right, so at this point, the chair is open for, for motions, if anyone would like to make one, I'm sorry, Ms. Weiskopf? Yes?
I have a question, I just want to make sure, if we vote to send it to Planning first, you're sending basically just the minutes and with no parameters. I just want to make sure I understand that we're either sending information with no parameters, or we're sending it back to Rules, Rules and Law, where they will ask for parameters and, and an ordinance to be, is that correct?
Mr. Braun?
Thank you, Mr. President, I mean, you can always as a, take a, a vote tonight and say, we want you to consider the number X, and they can do that. Remember, the last time, if you send something to them and they change it, that changes the ability to pass it.
Correct.
So if you're more open-ended about it and let them bring something to you, then you as a majority can decide to adopt it or not adopt it.
And, and as I understand that option, if it's open-ended, Planning Commission does not have the ability to add items to our agenda for consideration. What they'd be doing is basically collaborating with us, creating an ordinance. That ordinance would still require a council member or a collective vote from council to put on our agenda for consideration. It's really to address what we learned during the urban farming work is, if it's open, if council's will is more of an open-ended, hey, we would like your opinion, create an ordinance, we would then have the flexibility to act on it based on that. Alternatively, we can be prescriptive, we can say, we want it, we want you to change this number. And again, that's an option that anyone in council can do through a motion tonight, you could also do it on your own outside of the meeting.
I just want to make sure I understood the process.
And I believe, do you have any corrections on that for me, Mr. Braun? I believe I have that right. All right, so at this point, the, the chair is open to motions, if anyone would like to make a motion related to zoning code 153252F6AI, the chair is open to any motion. All right, seeing none, I believe the will of council at least is what it is tonight, is that we will continue with the research that was done, thank the Rules and Law group for taking up that item that we prescribed. And again, if any individual council member would like to create their own ordinance, that's certainly your right under rule 3003 in our Rules of Council. All right, great, again, thank you, I think that was a very productive discussion, I think everyone, especially with opposing views, working through that process, it's certainly something that council does from time to time. Changing zoning code is significant, as Mayor Hawkins mentioned, it's not just the will of the individual person that wants to use their property, it's important to remember the rest. And when people buy property, they have a certain set of rules that they bought into, and those are important to maintain when it's appropriate. At the same time, I do think it's important that when residents come forward, that we're responsive to that, so thank you to everyone that was involved with that. All right, at this point, is there any other old business that council would like to bring forward? All right, seeing none, we'll move on to new business, is there any new business anyone in council would like to bring forward? Mayor Hawkins?
Thank you, Mr. President, three matters that I want to put on council's radar. The first one is Old Gate Drive connects Northland Boulevard and Kemper. I personally have been in contact with the condo association for the folks back in Old Gate condos. The owner of the apartments back there, I have not been in direct communication with, but there's been some communication with the condo station, Asian's attorney, Mr. Braun's had some contact with her, and the long and short is, they're looking at going through and redoing Old Gate Drive. And the long and short is, uh, they're looking at going through and redoing Old Gate Drive. Uh, that, for a number of years, has been something that's been discussed. I think they've come back and, and asked the city a couple of times, uh, if they would, who would take that, that road. It was not built to city specs thirty-five, forty years ago, and so the answer's always been no. As they're getting ready to redo that roadway, they're considering looking at putting it to city specs. And so there's a whole lot of moving parts there. But want to put sit, the city council, uh, on your radar. If that's something that may take place, if it does get made to city specs, uh, it'd be something we wouldn't be paying for, uh, but would be something that would come before you guys for legislation for a road dedication, no different than any other road that's within our, our confines in our city. It's important to note, there's a whole lot of moving parts from our side of things in terms of parameters. It's got to be to city specs, uh, public works, as well as Mr. Braun, our legal and administration will be monitoring to make sure that it's done just so, if that's going to happen. So want to put that on your radar. Uh, the second issue is formerly Cincinnati Mills Mall, formerly, uh, Forest Fair Mall, that is going through a process of redevelopment potentially. And so I believe that Fairfield City Council has already addressed this. This matter's going to go before Forest Parks City Council, February the tenth, I think. It's already gone through their planning commission, the information I have. What they're looking at doing, and this primarily what is in Forest Park that impacts our city, specifically the folks that are in Beacon Hills and having lived on Bridgeport right across the fence of our backyard, we had the wonderful privilege of dealing with that parking lot and all the craziness that went on there. Uh, they're looking at putting up two hundred and fifty to three hundred and fifty-five thousand square feet, three of them, uh, buildings that are going to be essentially warehouse industrial-like buildings. So while the renderings I have don't do justice in terms of the height, I envision something that's close to the buildings that we have over by the movie theater. So you're probably talking about three stories, four stories. And they're, again, much like when they did the mall, they're not doing much in terms of buffering for our residents that are in Beacon Hills. So what I'm asking and proposing, council think about, and we can, if it's something council wants to do, it can, we can ask Mr. Braun to prepare a resolution. I'm going to write a letter to both Fairfield and Forest Park. Uh, I've had good communication with Mayor Brown and Forest Park before. And, and so want to make sure, and we, we can't make them do anything, just like they can't make us do anything, but it's good for them at least to have some consideration. I know, what, thirty, forty years ago, it would have been nice for everybody that lived in Beacon Hills that they would have given some consideration with regard to not having that much parking and displacing all the animals that were there and everything else. So there's an opportunity here to see if they will give us a little bit of a buffer up there, uh, to help protect our residents. So that's, that's the second thing. And the third thing is, our, our, uh, state legislators are, are at it again in terms of looking at potentially changing the law. And so despite just having this marijuana law passed, there's, there's a bill that I think is in the works and don't know where it's going to go, and, and Mr. Braun's watching this for us, but there's a bill that's in the works of changing the, uh, excise tax on adult-use cannabis products from ten percent to fifteen percent. So initially, everybody'd say, oh, well, that's, that's great. It means more money for the city. No, the thing they want to change is the percent that was going to come to municipalities that were going to have these places, they want it all to go to the state. So something else where I, again, depending on where those things go, I, I would ask that council consider possibly a resolution to go to our state legislators to indicate that that's not something that we're interested in taking place. Thank you.
So I know, at least speaking for myself, uh, i- if you need a formal vote to create those resolutions, we can do that tonight, but I think all you need is at least one of us to say we'd like it drafted. Uh, so please consider this a formal request, uh, to draft both resolutions, at least from my perspective, uh, unless anyone in council has real concern about us at least taking that topic up. Mr. Vanover?
Thank you, Mr. President. Well, this reeks of their, uh, this state trying to, uh, do the income tax, where we send everything to them and then they send it back. And, uh, unfortunately, when you send money to Columbus, it's not a boomerang. Uh, it's a broken boomerang when you get it back. So, uh, my response on that is yes, send the, uh, resolution with a big hell no on it because, uh, we keep them out of our, our stock pot.
Yeah, and I, I think it's important that that resolution includes some of the concerns that we have. And if the other ones, if people have ones they'd want to include, certainly we have an opportunity to share them tonight or with Mr. Braun separately. I know for myself, I'd like to make sure at least the item on the marijuana law include comments about, uh, cities have been taking action for the past year plus under a certain set of expectations on how that money could be used. So when we enacted legislation that we did and had brought in and set up licensing, um, we were planning to offset some of the concerns our residents had about having those types of products, at least early on, um, to understand it. Things about public safety costs, traffic costs, things like that. Uh, those are very real things that we considered when we accepted the businesses into our community. And I think that resolution needs to say more than just, we don't like it. It needs to be specific and say the things that we'd counted on, and unless they're giving us the assurances, that we're getting at least that back. I'm not opposed to the extra five percent. I'm very opposed to the fact that they're going to dole it out in whatever they see fit because we did our work with certain expectations, and that's really pulling the rug out from under us. It's, it's really inappropriate by them, at least from my perspective. Certainly, I'm speaking for myself here, not all of council. That, that would come up when we take up the resolution. Mr. Jacobs.
Thank you, Mr. President. Also speaking for myself, um, this is really no surprise. There's been a multi-decade effort. The folks in Columbus do not support home rule. And any chance they can to take it away, they will try it. I don't know if we can stop it. But an example for the public, just that I've seen over the last few years, if, if Columbus could, they could, they would love to force, for example, Forest Park, Sharonville and, uh, Springdale to have one police department and one fire department. And if they could do it, they would. And again, on a personal note, when, when a legislature has a supermajority, you lose your checks on some of that power grab that we have seen for years and years and years. And so unfortunately, this is just more of the same. Again, only speaking for myself, and that has nothing to do with the resolution. Thank you.
Health departments are another example that have come up in the past. Um, income tax, uh, we benefit from home rule in so many ways people don't realize. Um, the fact that residents can call us and talk to us, and we can change the rules or look at rules to see what makes the most sense for us. Just now, earlier today, we talked about domestic pets and keeping of that. Uh, several years ago, the state tried to change zoning law for us about what types of pets and how many could be done. We wouldn't have had the opportunity to have the discussion we had tonight about, uh, domestic pets because the state was ready to overrule us. In that case, we sent a letter to our lobbying committee, the, the League of Cities, um, that helped fight that back. And I think it's important we speak up when that comes up. Mr. Vanover?
Thank you, Mr. President. Well, and a note to, uh, over the years, the, I guess, uh, power shift has gone from municipalities to townships. And I, personally, I think there's a little bit of envy, uh, because municipalities have certain powers that townships do not have. Um, and they, you know, want a, want a slice of the pie, but they don't want to do, uh, the due diligence and the work. So, um, that's, that's also added to that, and that's been an ongoing thing for a number of years.
And I will say on the Old Gate, oh, I'm sorry, not Old Gate question, the Forest Fair Mall resolution, if you're, you're asking for that, um, I, I know that if, if it's necessary to protect that residence on that side, I know at least for myself, I, I would be open to even sharing some of the costs that might be involved with that if the budget could bear it. That's something I think the finance committee could look at, even if we could, if, if it comes down to contributing. I'm not promising money, that's not mine to do, um, but I'm saying I'm open to even a conversation like that because I know the impact that the mall development had on our residents in Beacon Hills. Um, and I want to make sure that we've taken as much steps as we can to protect that redevelopment when it's happening. Uh, I mean, that was a huge impact that affected so many lives. Mayor Hawkins.
Thank you, Mr. President. Yeah, and, and, you know, we, we can explore all things, but it's one of those things, much like the mall. Those, that, that development, which was the mall, and this development, which are these giant, um, warehouse facilities, they're so big, they don't have to be that big. You can scale that back a little bit, you can give us a little bit of a buffer. I mean, fifty yards makes a huge difference for our residents. It, it's a negligible impact for them in what they're doing. They shift that a little bit further, what, west, and it gives us some reprieve. We are the only ones that are really impacted there. You get a little bit from Fairfield, but, but Fairfield, quite frankly, when you look at the, the, uh, diagram, they have Fairfield's protecting their residents, they, they're not having this part of that in their area. And Forest Park doesn't have residents over there, so, you know, they're not impacted. But we are, and, and it's one of those things where you, you just hope, and again, we can't make them do anything, they can't make us do anything, but you hope that, that maybe they give some consideration to their neighbors a- as we sit there. And, and quite frankly, you know, if, if this is developed as they've proposed it, it's worse than the mall in terms of what our residents are going to look at that live over there on Bridgeport. It's, it's ten times worse than, than that situation. You know, you, you go out there and you look at a parking lot in the mall, what, a hundred, two hundred feet away, this looks like it's going to be a rather ominous imposing building right there in their backyard.
And again, we talked about specifics in the resolutions. I think it's important that we call out concerns about lighting, noise abatement, security. I can tell you, those are the things I got calls on, and still people, I mean, I, that's my district. Um, the people I talk to, in, speaking in that back area, um, those are the things that come up, right? So those are the things I want to make sure we've addressed, um, those are real. Ms. McFarlane.
Uh, yeah, that's my neighborhood. I live about ten houses up from there. Um, the security is huge, uh, the noise is huge. Uh, we constantly hear drivers going on back there, to the point where it gets dogs barking, and, I mean, there's a lot of commotion. So I know even the people that live even closer, something is, is needed regardless of what they do there, so.
Thank you for bringing that to our attention. If there's anything else we need to do for that, we're certainly here for it. All right, anything else on, uh, we're still in new business? Is there anything else on those items or other new business anyone in council would like to bring forward? All right, seeing none, we'll move on to meetings and announcements. Ms. Sullivan Wisecup.
Thank you, Mr. President. Planning Commission will meet next Tuesday, February eleventh, in these chambers at seven P M.
Ms. McFarlane. Sorry, too fast, take your time.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Board of Health will meet Thursday, uh, February thirteenth, in these chambers.
Still in meetings and announcements. Ms. Morgan.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Civil Service Commission will meet tomorrow, February sixth, at two P M.
Mr. Gleaves.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Board of Zoning Appeals is scheduled to meet February twenty-fifth, in these chambers at seven P M.
All right, in closing out meetings and announcements, I will, uh, just as I mentioned in terms of announcements, uh, last night, uh, Ms. McFarlane and I had the opportunity to join the school district, uh, in one of the regular Q and A sessions they've been having. Uh, I'd encourage, uh, both council members and members of the public to, uh, look for those in the future. There's at least one more that's being scheduled in Springdale specifically, I believe. I don't think a date's been announced. Last night, it was at the school district, uh, it was at the Springdale Elementary, and it was well-attended. Uh, and there were, there was a lot of good feedback. Um, what I found is Superintendent Elgin, the treasurer, and several other members, and there were probably thirty to fifty members of the community, uh, from all over Springdale. Uh, they were there giving feedback to our school district, um, about what, this isn't about a specific item, um, about money. Uh, it was giving feedback and them listening for what's important to the school district from our residents. So I'd encourage everyone to take an opportunity, um, on any number of those meetings to attend and let your voice be heard for what you think is important for our public schools. Ms. Sullivan Wisecup.
Um, thank you, Mr. President. The next meeting at the rec center for Princeton, um, it will be on March the twelfth. It's a Wednesday at six to seven P M. If you want to hear that, it's the same meeting, I understand. I, I had thought that the one at the school was just for parents. I was told after the fact that anyone could, could come, so I didn't know that. So I plan on going, it's the March the twelfth, from six to seven at the community center.
Thank you for sharing that. It is certainly something we'll announce again. It is important, I, at least I feel our public schools are really important, and the fact that they're so open to the feedback from the residents right now. Take that opportunity to share what you think is working well in our public education system and what they need to work on. Uh, they are listening. Mayor Hawkins.
Thank you. Um, aside from that, Ms. McFarlane, did you reference horse races?
Oh, the S Y B.
Thank you, I just talked about that when you started to talk.
You always do it better than I do, so I would rather.
All right, in that case, Ms. McFarlane, when you're ready.
Thank you, Mr. President, and Mr. Mayor for the reminder. Um, yes, February twenty-second is the cinema horse races. Um, S Y B puts this on every year at the rec center. It's a huge fundraiser for us, uh, that helps keep sports costs low for our Springdale kids in the community. Uh, it's a lot of fun. Um, I believe Mr. Anderson will be dealing cards and Mr. Jacobs will be serving drinks. And I'm doing something, the meeting was tonight, so I guess I'll find out later what I've been put in charge of. But it's a great time, it's a lot of fun, uh, adults only, so come out and join us.
It, it really is a good time. Uh, I appreciate S Y B putting that forward. All right, any other meetings or announcements? All right, next is communications from the audience. This is the second and final time this evening where members of the audience have the opportunity to address council for any reason. You'd simply need to come forward to the dais, state your name and address, and then you can address council for up to five minutes on any topic, uh, that is of interest to you. The floor is now open for communications from the audience.
Good evening. So my name is Laura. I live here in the Springdale area, and it comes to my attention on regards of what's going on in the, in the states throughout our country. I want to know, in our community of Springdale, what we're doing. Reassurance to the, to any community of immigrants. That would be based on Hispanics, Africans, Asians, or in general, anyone from any part of the world. I want to know, I have many questions, and I know I have a time limit, but my first question would be for you guys. What are we doing to protect the children? As you know, there is children out here that are immigrants, don't have a legal status, but here because of their parents. So I want to know how they're protected outside of the school, on their way home or going to school to their bus stop? That's my question.
And I'm glad, thank you for coming forward. I, I'm glad you mentioned in school. I could tell you, I know I saw a letter from the superintendent that described their approach. We're certainly not able to speak to what's happening in the school. Um, I believe, Mayor Hawkins, did you want to comment on this?
Thank you, Mr. President. Just, just briefly, a, a, a few things. And, and the first part is, unlike a lot of school districts, Princeton has, uh, developed a policy, put a policy in place, and if folks have questions on that, they should contact the school district and they'll, they'll lay that out for them. Uh, I've been asked about this, and I referenced Mr. Schrader. Mr. Schrader asked myself and administration about this about two months ago. He reached out, so it goes to the forward thinking before any of these things were even put into place. And I told him, as I've told other residents, other elected officials that have asked the question, uh, these are federal initiatives, they're going to be enforced federally. And so it doesn't have anything to do with the city of Springdale in terms of enforcement. Um, we're going to follow our city charter, we're going to follow the state constitution, we're going to follow the federal constitution.
I understand.
And so those, there, there are separations with regard to what different governmental entities are doing and addressing with regard to different issues. This is not something that we have initiated, and it's not something that we are enforcing. This is coming from the federal government. Uh, so, and, and that said, sometimes folks may or may not understand how some of these, these things take place. And being an attorney with doing criminal defense work and having been a prosecutor, a lot of times when people come into the system to start to go through the deportation process, a lot of times it's, it's happened by way of them ending up incarcerated for something else, and they're, the, the federal government is notified of their status, and they get an immigration holder. And then from there, once they're finished with that, whatever process or case has them incarcerated, then it will be up to the federal government if they're going to come pick that person up and send them to the immigration process. That said, uh, we don't have a holding facility or jail that's active anymore. We, we at once did, at one point we did, we, it was a probably seventy-two hour facility. We would have people come in, usually for O V I convictions, they'd spend their three days with us. So it is a complete non-issue for us. So it is a complete non-issue for us in terms of notifying the federal government or anything like that. We don't even, we're not in a position to have folks. But even when there's somebody else that's arrested, if we arrested somebody for a theft charge, they're going down to the Justice Center, and at the Justice Center, that's the holding facility. If that entity, that would be the Hamilton County Sheriff's Office, decides they're going to run a check on somebody, that's something that they're doing. So for the city of Springdale, there's no aspect of what we're doing that really engages in that process. What I would suggest people do is, you know, you want to find out where your rights are and where the process is, you contact an immigration attorney and go through those things. As I often will tell people, I'm an attorney, but I'm not your attorney. And so, check with those folks and let them lay out for you what that process looks like, what's constitutional, what's not constitutional. There's some things that have been argued over and debated in terms of things that have been said and how enforceable some of those things are, but you protect yourself when you know what your rights are. And that's the best thing I can suggest that you do. But all those things, that's not the city of Springdale.
I understand, and I have another question that follows up basically in regards of that. And that's also in regards, as you know, the community is feared on regards of the situation. As you know, we're close to the border of Butler County, and Butler County has announced they are enforcing or helping ICE officials. So my next question would be then, how would you express in the way that we are okay to call law enforcement for anything, say that we see something that does not look right or we're fearful of our safety? Will law enforcement be there and not judge or anything of the sort of our skin type?
If I may, Mr. President?
Please.
I have to be very clear on this, and I'm very sensitive to this issue with my history in working in the criminal justice system. I'm very critical of law enforcement doing their job the correct way, and I'm very, very proud of the way our law enforcement officers conduct themselves and have conducted themselves. There, I have very little slack. Again, having been a prosecutor, when you don't do your job right, and I'm a prosecuting attorney, and you don't do a good report, you don't do a good investigation, I'm not happy with you if you're not testifying the way you need to, because then you make my job more difficult. On the other side of it, it's my job to watch all the little things that folks are doing. We've got a great police department, Chief Butler does an excellent job. So I'm telling you, I don't care what race, skin tone, where you're from, the last thing we're gonna have is a police department or any other department that's gonna be discriminatory in any way, shape, or form. That's not gonna happen. So, I mean, even the idea of that is upsetting for me that someone would even denote that that may be something that would come through. And I'm not saying that's necessarily where you're going with it, but I can't say that any firmer. We have excellent folks that are directors of our departments, and they do a fantastic job, including our police department. That's not something that we're gonna be doing. This is not, you know, I don't want to sound like Sam Wysh. You don't live in, fill in the blank, you live in Springdale. So we're not gonna, we're not doing things that other folks are doing. That's not where we are. And even in terms of talking about neighboring places, you know, again, it's important to be clear. Now, I've been to a commission, I just went to a commission meeting within the last few weeks in Butler County. I didn't hear any commissioner, I didn't hear their county administrator say anything about immigration enforcement, anything like that. It's important that folks understand process whereas how things normally take place. And it's usually the way that I indicated, it's usually folks that are incarcerated, and then they get an immigration holder. Now, in fairness, in the last fifteen, twenty years, I mean, practicing law primarily in Butler County and Hamilton County, but a lot in Butler County, there have been different times where there have been raids on different giant businesses, manufacturing businesses that tend to be in Fairfield and Westchester, and there have been big roundups of folks that have not been in the United States legally. But I could count on one hand, in the last fifteen to twenty years, how many times those things have happened. And if there's law enforcement or communities that are, had said, hey, come over here, look over here, that may be, but those are rare things that take place. I know several folks that work for the U.S. Marshals that are in or around Butler County. That's not their primary focus typically, usually they're doing something else. So I empathize with the concerns that you're referencing and the people that have those concerns, I do. The biggest thing I think folks need to make sure they do is educate themselves on how these things typically take place and what their rights are. And the best way to do that is through an immigration attorney. But I'm telling you right now, the city of Springdale is not, and it hasn't been, our prior administration with Mayor Webster, folks are not gonna be doing things that are discriminatory in process.
Thank you, and Mayor Hawkins to add to that, so that's certainly the view from administration. I can also echo those comments. I think it was really well described, the way the city is approaching this. Mayor Hawkins and I spoke about this, I want to say a week ago, maybe longer, just to make sure we were aligned. In general, what he's saying is true, and I go one further, you had asked what we can do to protect, I mean, your shared people. Mayor Hawkins described the policy of the city. City Council also has a Public Safety Commission Subcommittee. If we were to find out, there's checks and balances even inside this organization. If we were to find out that a policy shifted like that and it was causing concern or harm to residents, City Council has the ability to convene that commission and take up those concerns or questions. So I would encourage you or anyone else in the community, if you're finding that we're not being consistent in how we're treating residents, you have a lot of avenues to have that addressed. I know, all of our contact information is available on the web, and you will find that we treat those types of concerns very seriously. I know that if you go a little further north, it's a different viewpoint. I can only speak to what we do here. I was very encouraged when I spoke with the mayor about this last week, that we are aligned in that space. And I'm telling you or anyone else that's listening, that we're here to make sure that our community stays safe. And so we're here for that. So I hope that helps and answers questions. I will echo the one other point he mentioned, know your rights, I think that's super important. I know other communities have described this idea of a red card that's going around, if you've seen that. If you haven't seen that, I'd encourage you to take a look at it. It describes a lot of those rights. That goes to Law and Order and the background that I have in general, too. It's not that we're condoning illegal activity, we're saying that everyone has certain rights, and those you should know what they are, and the best way you can do to keep yourself safe is to make sure you know what those are. If you find or anyone finds that we're not meeting that, let us know, and we will address it. We take it very seriously.
And I just want to clarify, you said also on the website, but let's say someone who doesn't know how to navigate on the website, can we always come here in the Springdale, the city of Springdale building, and where to?
Yeah, so that's, administration, you would have to answer that. I can tell you, my information's available, and I can certainly give you any number of cards you'd like to have. I don't know if you want to address how people would come in, Mayor Hawkins?
I can't say this enough times. Folks can always call me, you can call the administrative office, three four six fifty seven hundred. You know, we did last year a State of the City address in March, we're gonna do another one this year. At each time, every department head is made available after the presentation for people to ask questions of. You're going right to the top of each department. You get a question about, you know, someone's paint chipping on their house, Ms. Hayes is there to answer that question. You got a question about, you know, we need to hire more of one person or another, Ms. Edwards will be there to answer that question. You got a question about our fire department, police department, and so on. So we're making folks available, and trying to foster an idea within the community. If you have a question, come ask the folks that have the answer to the question. So you call the administration, and we'll do it. People call me about all kinds of things, some things I can handle, and some are city-related, some are not directly, but I'll try to get you to where you need to be. But we want you to contact the city to ask questions that are city-related versus going online and asking random people who don't have the answer to the question. That's not where you go, and that amazes me every time I see that online, people are asking city questions to people that have no idea. Call an elected official, you can call me whenever you want to, or you can call the city, and we'll get you the answer if it's related to the city of Springdale.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And just to add to, I understand, I hear what you're saying about the fear, it's real. One of my middle child is Hispanic in his heritage, and I worry about that, too. I mean, you shouldn't, it's very personal to me. He was born in Cincinnati, but it doesn't mean that he's not gonna run into some of these same challenges. So I see things that are happening in that space, too. I'm not saying that I understand everything that's been going on, but I certainly see things, and I worry about those things, too, is what I'm saying. So just know that I'm concerned about it also, and if there's something we need to do, please do reach out. Mr. Gleaves wanted to make a comment.
Thank you, Mr. President. Piggyback on what everybody else has said, we have a great police department. And one thing you have to understand about a police department is we do not have a lot of turnover. These men and women have been here for years, they've been driving these streets for years. You have probably seen them many, many times, they have seen you many, many times. There has been incidences across the nation recently where people have been acting as phony ICE agents or agents to take care of these issues. Please, don't hesitate to call the police. If someone comes to your home, and the car does not say, "Police, Springdale", you know what they look like, everybody's lived here for a long time knows. Please, don't hesitate to call down and report anything that is suspicious. And again, with that, knowing your rights, no one can approach you without proper identification. So that is very important, that you know that your police, who you've seen many times, will come and protect you. So that's what I want you to know. Thanks for coming down, appreciate that.
You still have three minutes, if there's anything else you want to add.
Well, I think I did have another one, but that's already resolved with the district near us. Wittenworth has expressed how they're gonna protect their children in school, letting us know if they have a warrant, that they're allowed to just get that one person they need, and that's it. So I'm grateful for the district schools helping us out. And I guess I want to reiterate on people who do have legal status that still are feared, even though they have a legal status, basically reassurance that they shouldn't be feared of anything. And again, you guys already reiterated about the police department, fire department, and especially you guys. And I appreciate that.
Thank you, I appreciate you coming out. I mean, I get it, I took my son to the DMV last week to get his state ID. He's seventeen. I took him down there because I want him to have a piece of ID, I get it, I understand people are afraid. So thank you for coming out here and let us explain to you what we're doing.
I appreciate, and again, I thank you for your time for listening me out, and questions and concerns and reassurance. Hopefully, everyone watching this later today, they understand that you guys are there in the possible way to help us out.
Thank you. Yep, you're fine. Mr. Gleaves, did you have a last comment?
Laura, one question. After you've come down and expressed yourself, and you've heard what you heard tonight, do you feel better?
Yes, I feel reassured, I feel safe in my community, and most definitely, I feel the support from you guys. And I hope that continues on into the future.
Will you let everybody know?
Thank you.
Thanks for coming.
All right, we're still in communications from the audience. If anyone else would like to address council for any reason, the floor is still open. Hope we can get you to sign in after she's done.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Christopher Pinwell. I'm here on behalf of my employer, Direct Venture C D L Training. We have recently come into the city, and we have begun operations. I wanted to introduce ourselves, because you will be seeing our trucks around. We're currently located on Sheekley Way. So we will be in the city, traveling around, things of that nature. I wanted to introduce ourselves, because at our core, Direct Venture C D L Training believes that every person deserves the opportunity for gainful employment, and we are here to serve residents of Springdale from all different socioeconomic backgrounds to achieve those goals. We are an adult program, currently, the majority of our business is Class A C D Ls. So we are looking forward to the opportunity to operate within the city. At the same time, we also want to make sure that City Council, the residents of Springdale, understand that we are also here to be an asset. Community outreach is very important to us. Anything that we can do as a company to assist in outreach programs put on through the city, we're more than welcome to do what we can and offer our services that way. Again, I'll keep my comments brief, but just wanted to introduce us, and you'll see us out there. But for us, and pun intended here, we do go the extra mile. So we look forward to any future endeavors we might have with you.
Excellent, what was the, I'm sorry, the name of the company?
Direct Venture C D L Training.
That's right, thank you. All right, thank you for coming. If you could make sure you sign in, just so we have it for the record.
Absolutely.
Thank you. All right, the floor is still open, if anyone else would like to address council for any reason. Simply come forward, as soon as she's done. You just need to sign in, state your name and address, and then you can address council.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Pam Rathjens. I live at Baldwin Grove at eleven eleven one Springfield Pike. I have been there since two thousand and eight of March. And since I've been there, my phone system, which was operated, was put in by Cincinnati Bell, I'm still having problems. My phone landline is open to the whole community of Baldwin Grove. I came here last week, I believe, and spoke to a gentleman here at the administrative office in this building. And I'm sorry, I didn't get his name. I also talked to a woman that was in that office also. And I am having problems with my landline. My son says, "Mom, there's no reason why nobody can dig a hole and take care of this problem." Now, it's been going on since two thousand of eight of March. I've even confronted Baldwin Grove community, one of their meetings, about this. Just recently, week or two ago, nothing. When it happened in the beginning, I was on the phone, the landline, with my daughter. It was after midnight. She said, "Mom, somebody's listening into our conversation, and it's still going on." I went to Cincinnati Bell downtown. I even worked at Cincinnati Bell, even across the river, as an agency employee. They wanted me to work there permanently. I said, "No, I ain't crossing this bridge anymore." So anyway, I went to a branch that was downstairs at the main floor, downtown of a Cincinnati Bell branch that was open to the public. Bell branch that was open to the public. And I talked to them, and they said, "Well, there's nothing we can do, it's management." Well, Baldwin Grove changes managements as far as someone in that office every time you turn your head. So I'm tired. I'm eighty-two years old, I've been there since March of two thousand and eight, nothing, nothing. I'm tired of fighting this. I'm tired of fighting it. I don't have a cellphone at the moment, because they're changing to contract with Verizon or senior citizens' cellphone ended either last month, January, December, November, could have been October, I'm not keeping track, I'm tired of it. Tired of Baldwin Grove getting away with murder as far as this situation. Can't use my landline, I'm a senior citizen. They quit the smoking, okay, but still there's people smoking, they're lying to management about smoking. I have COPD, but it's not because I smoke, I don't smoke, I haven't smoked, never, ever. I have that problem, too, with the residents in the building. They're lying to management about, when management asks them, "Do you smoke? There's a certain regulation with the dogs, I mean, animals, that's okay, the animals don't smoke." It's residents. They're lying to management that they don't smoke. Many a times, I go to the front entrance of this building to go and check my mail, because I've been out grocery shopping or whatever, and I stop at the front entrance. And the last time, the smoke killed me. There wasn't any smoke when I walked in, but when I came out... So I approached management, and I tell them, I told her, Michelle Blair, the new one, how long she's gonna last? I don't, I don't know. But you can't even talk to them sometimes. And when you confront, when at the community meeting, I confronted them. I said, "They're smoking, it's still going on. You say you're gonna get rid of these people who are breaking the laws and regulations, but they're still here."
Pam, your time's expired, if there's, is there something that anyone on council administration wanna address? I'm not entirely clear of the best way we can help in this situation. Mr. Yule?
Thank you, Mr. President. If you would, just make sure that your contact information is listed there on that sheet, and then whatever contact, phone number that you would like us to reach out to you on, we'll make sure that whatever contacts that we can provide by way of Cincinnati Bell and/or communication with Baldwin Grove, we'll try and assist you the best way we can.
Okay, appreciated.
Yeah, so just be sure to sign in there. Mayor Hawkins, did you have a comment?
Thank you, Mr. President. And ma'am, do we have a conversation with regard to the age? Did I talk with you from Baldwin Grove about the age limits, or did I speak with another resident? There've been a couple of different residents that have contacted me from Baldwin Grove about different issues going on. I remember you talking about smoke stuff before, but did we talk about the age of the individuals that are living there, too? Did we have that conversation? Was that a concern before?
I applied, I had a spiritual sister that lived across the street in Maple Leaf. She kept telling me, because I owned a home in Springfield Township, and I had to get rid of it because of mold and mildew. So I put my name on the list, and in two thousand and eight, I lost a brother. I'm from the East Coast, I'm from Northern Virginia, I'm from DC, I'm from the federal government area, okay? My family were all federal employees.
And ma'am, if you could keep the comments close, your time's expired, so if you could just answer the question?
I just wanted to make sure, if we talked about that, I thought we had, I thought you were the individual that had spoken with me about it. But at any rate, that issue had been raised in terms of that they, Baldwin Grove was not in compliance with regard to age covenants. And so administratively, we have looked into that, Ms. Hayes has given the information that provided with Mr. Braun, and that is something that we're looking into and addressing. So I just wanna make sure if that was a concern, that matter is being addressed. Some of the things that you've referenced, and Mr. Yule said leave your contact information, we'll have somebody reach out to you, some of the things you've addressed are beyond the city of Springdale's control, but something like the age is something we can address because it goes with the covenants that run with the land from when they open that up. So that's something that we are gonna address, but it's important to know if there's things that the city of Springdale directly is tied to, then we will like that issue. There's certain things we may not be able to address, but administratively, we can probably give you some good direction in terms of getting those things resolved, okay? So just make sure you leave your information so we can get back to you.
Okay.
Thank you, ma'am.
I, you know, I have the last community meeting, it could be two years ago, but at one time, there was four entities that owned that building, not so now.
Ma'am, I'm sorry to interrupt you, but we'll need to move on. If you could make sure the contact's there, it sounds like administration can look into it for you. And again, thank you for coming out and bringing it to our attention. We'll do what we can to help, obviously. All right, the floor is still open, if anyone else would like to address council for any reason. Second call, third and final call. All right, at this point, I have closing communications in the audience, and we'll move on to a recap of legislative items and legislation development. Mr. Jacobs, when you're ready.
Thank you, Mr. President. As you review your legislative summary, council, item one was addressed by ordinance zero six twenty twenty-five, receiving a first reading, an ordinance authorizing the mayor and city administrator to enter into a memorandum of understanding with the Hamilton County Regional Planning Commission for use of funding through the Mini Planning Grant Program to complete the Mill Creek Connector feasibility study, again, receiving a first reading. Item two was addressed by ordinance number seven twenty twenty-five, an ordinance authorizing the mayor and city administrator to enter into an agreement with Jake Sweeney Chrysler Jeep Dodge Ram for the purchase of two twenty twenty-four Dodge Durango Police Pursuit Vehicles, receiving that first reading. And item three, an ordinance authorizing the mayor and city administrator to enter into an agreement for design engineering for the Northland Boulevard and Kemper Road intersection modifications and Shared Youth Path Project is on the agenda for a first reading at our February nineteenth meeting.
Second reading.
Oh, I apologize, thank you, that'll be a second reading. Item four, an ordinance to establish Ledro Street as a one-way traffic destination will be brought before council for a first reading on our February nineteenth meeting. Item five, an ordinance authorizing the mayor and city administrator to enter into an agreement for design engineering for the Community Center HVAC Replacement Project Phase Two will also receive a first reading on our February nineteenth meeting. That's all I have, unless administration has anything else.
And are we still expecting Hamilton County Auditor Jessica Moran at our next meeting? Okay, good. And will we track any of the two resolutions that we talked about tonight? Anything else from council? Are we good administration on that? All right. All right, in that case, all that's left before us is item fourteen.
Move adjourned.
All right, we're adjourned, thank you, everyone.